Great, great. Okay. So, that's something that we would like to see as far as policies. Alright, next discussion.
Are you offering the cap on that, a limit as to what you all can spend?
Uh, they have a forty-six-hundred-dollar limit.
There's always a limit.
It's a limit, it's always been a limit. So, if they go to one, um, like, I'm getting ready to go somewhere in January, but, um, when I went to Washington, when I went to, oh, when I was in Cincinnati a couple of weeks ago, it cost me three thousand dollars. Okay, so, if they go, if that one trip cost three thousand, that's it, that's all. And then, if they go, then they have sixteen hundred dollars left. When they exceed that, there's no more money. That's it. They have forty-six hundred and that's it. And that will include their per diem, the, um, taxi, airfare, and hotel. Yes, sir? Yes, sir, Mr. Travis?
Yeah, can he go on these trips?
I'm sorry, can't hear you.
Okay, when he go on these trips?
Uh-huh.
When he come back, can they get a report?
Sure.
He never done that?
Well, no, no, I have done it. I've done it, and I think Mrs. Lewis Williams has, and so, well, they say they've done it, so, I don't know which one, but I even have my, I've written some of mine as well, and I've brought some of the people back from it.
I haven't done it.
Yeah, they've gone yet. So, yes, they will bring back reports, I'm pretty sure.
And they should be filed for.
Yes, it will be filed, yes, that's why we're doing it, so anybody that want to report it, they can look at it. We'll have policies and procedures, so we'll be careful of everything that we do. That's business, okay? Anyone else? Comments? Alright, next discussion, establishment community action and engagement committee. The purpose of this committee was, we thought it would be nice and something different. They were very successful in the last committee, and it's open for anyone else that might want to join. Mr. Travis, I know you had an interest. They are going to open, um, this one will do town hall meetings for us. They'll basically be doing it for the village, and it'll be totally village business. Um, there is going to be a developer coming here very soon, some things that they're gonna bring out. Instead of the board doing it all the time, we will give it to the residents to understand it, and host the board of town hall meetings. And that way, that engage our stakeholders to be a dominant part of what's going on. Although the board will be sitting and assisting it, or questions and concerns, this committee will host those for us. So that way, we can engage our community into everything we're doing, so we keep the transparency here. And we will have one coming up in March. This committee. Discussions?
Yeah, Mayor, can you explain a little bit on the outside?
Thank you.
I'm lost on a little bit. When you said, uh, community action and engagement, what would they exactly be doing?
I'm sorry?
What would they be doing exactly? I'm a little lost, I heard you said town hall.
That's it. They'll be doing our town hall meetings. Um, for us, some of those, it's more informational things for the village, that the people want to know as a whole, which we don't do, and it will be under the umbrella of the Human Services Special Events Committee.
Okay, yeah.
It's one of their subcommittees.
Because I was gonna say was that, that would almost be like the Human Service.
It is.
Okay.
Well, they don't do that actually, they do, um, fun things like Black History Month, fundraisers, I mean, not fundraisers, Bless History Month, um, toll drives, all of this fun stuff too as well, but they'll be under that purview. Okay?
Uh, Madam Mayor, I should be recognized, because I have to, my colleague, I'm a little lost too. I'm just gonna read the functions that's written down here.
Mm-hmm.
It said, "A status liaison between the municipal government and the community. Don't you believe that is job of the members of the board of trustees and yourself to go out and establish relationships with members of the community?"
Yes, that's what we do, but then also, we would have a liaison, which is Human Services Special Events.
So, if we, why would we need to create a committee to do our jobs?
That's, they're not doing our jobs, they're assisting with us, because we don't have staff to pay to do all of that for us.
Uh, Madam Mayor, wouldn't it be our job to review and study the needs of the community and issues affecting the residents of the village? Is that a job of a trustee and or the mayor?
We can extract that, no problem, okay?
Oh, Madam, I'm not asking for that, I'm just asking, shouldn't that be our job to do these things, Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir, it is.
So, I'm, I'm like, why are you trying to allocate something that we should be doing to someone else?
Okay, we're doing it, and we're having them assist us with it. Like I said, we have, will you let me finish your answer before it's over? Okay, um, they're assisting us in the things that we will be doing for that night. I know we will set it aside, get it done, but again, we don't have the staff to hire to do these things. We would say, "Okay, we need you to go out here and get these done, make sure we send the emails out, do this, that." We don't have all that. So, they're assisting us, that's what committees do with their people and their villages.
Madam Mayor, assuming that we try our best to promote unity, and unity.
That's, that's what, that's.
That's, that's, that is like our job, isn't it?
Yes, yes, sir.
They, I'm, I'm looking at this, and pretty much everything written in here is a job of a trustee or a mayor. And that's something that we ought to be doing. You don't create separate committees to do things that we should be doing. If we want to analyze issues, we can read next door, we can go door to door and ask people. To me, it seems like something for elections.
No.
Maybe that's why they slipped up and said something about fundraising.
No, I didn't slip up in saying anything about fundraising, I said human services and fundraising. We don't do the fundraising for human services, okay, it's not a slip up. It's very, we make that very clear to you, okay? Now, and just like the block club, we're not gonna do that either, okay? So, don't throw that one with that. So, what we're going to say is, we can always modify that and make those changes, sir? Are you paying attention now?
Uh, I'm okay, thank you.
We will change, I will change that, that's why this is a meaning of the whole. And we can modify that and their responsibilities, okay? We will change it, I sent it out to you beforehand.
Good, just, uh, Madam Mayor, just, uh, well, I guess I would ask the village manager, Chief, are we, I know we're working on, and the Police and Fire Commission is working on the bodies, will we inevitably get, uh, community policing going so that we can properly establish the block club? You know, and properly establish block clubs? Right, block clubs, because that is something, that is something.
We have a block club.
That is something, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, go ahead.
That is something that I did as an officer, and that each community, as we go through town, Neighborhood Watch, you name it, I want the officer to be able to, because ever you may have Farmview, you may have Old Ford's Lane, you may have Cloverway, you may, am I right, Chief?
Yes, correct.
That's, now, I understand, I'm not relating to whatever is going on in the community, because whatever they do, if it's benefiting to the community, that's what it does. What I'm speaking about is what I do, or what I have done, under the badge, and that is establish block by block.
Right.
Would we be able, or will we inevitably get to that point? Because I see the word in which I remember seeing in one of my general orders, was to establish liaison between municipal government and the community, but it was more of, uh, a whole umbrella when the city of Harvey did it. So, and you come from that area, so you understand the language that I'm speaking as far as. So, will we ever get to that point here?
Trustee, I would tell you, you know, I, I do see the police department getting to that point, uh, within this year. Um, and I think we've already gotten to that point where we already hold, you know, yearly meetings, or, you know, meetings twice a year in regards to, uh, providing community updates. The issue that we have as far as community awareness, police, and block clubs, is finding individuals on each block to step up, to want to represent their block and be a liaison to the police department. So, I think that would be the biggest challenge that we have, but we can always do another, uh, public relations push in regards to that specific subject, maybe get another campaign towards the spring and summertime, but I don't foresee an issue with that at all whatsoever.
I just want, and then actually, what, the reason why I asked that question, Mayor, is that, um, I do think it's beneficial when we do have the manpower, and then the commanders over there would have an officer, uh, help establish, and also work with those already established, um, with the block clubs here in University Park. And when I say clubs, that's usually how it works from a trained, certified, community police officer.
And it would be more of a village, um, effort. It's a village effort, and to include the people, and I've always said that, one person from the area that come in and work when this village provided, okay? And then they're working for a better effort of those during the village. So, exactly, I see where you're saying with that.
Yeah, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I'd like to just make a couple comments, and I know Ms. Stroud back there is dying, and also, her arms get tired, she's holding it up so long. Uh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna make an admission here, uh, you won't see me do this too many times, but unfortunately, I don't know everything. And, uh, I don't, what's going on particularly with the village. And, uh, there are some folks out here that got better ideas than I do. Now, you won't hear, you won't hear that from me again. But, uh, I'm one big, that's, that's very big on, uh, collaboration. I've worked on a lot of different committees, uh, with the village, and I consider the input and the enthusiasm and the dedication of all of the people who have served on those committees to be very valuable to the village, you know, we, uh, for example, um, the Human Services Special Events Committee, we actually started the program for the block clubs, because the, the plan was, uh, and what we asked, to, you know, to start off was with each one of the trustees and the mayor, for their block to, to form a club and have an event during the summer, you know, where people can come together. And, you know, one reason was my recommendation to do that, because I live over in Pine Wood's Court, but, you know, I've been over there now thirty years, but, and this was probably, uh, ten years ago, and the neighbors just didn't even know each other. And it was amazing when we got together and had this kind of, uh, bring your own favorite dish, how many different cultures were represented, and, and what a good time, and how we then started to get to know each other, uh, and formed a list, and be with each other, and then subsequently had some other, but it's sort of like the old Chicago block club, you know? So, um, you know, from that standpoint, it was pretty good. We tried to do also like, uh, community garage sales, but, you know, coordinating. So, uh, people come, uh, with, uh, a lot of good ideas, and a lot of, uh, ways to make the, the community better, you know? Now, I know that, uh, for example, Miss Trust is involved with the Community Block Club, which is, you know, again, it's a, it's a great effort. It's on a little wider scale. We, you know, just knowing how difficult it is to do anything on a mass scale, that's why this Human Services Special Events Committee just want to do a block by block, and then try to recruit other staff that live in the village to help with that. And some of those, uh, block clubs are still going on, I know I see, we trust the Keith Griffin back there, he's, was very successful in his efforts, uh, in his block club, and I think there's, there's still even going on today. You know, he's not a, he's not trustee. So, um, you know, maybe, uh, as trustee Brown indicated, we need to fine tune this a little bit. I, I understand how the, um, benefits of the communications and being involved, you know, we're gonna get the, the cable station up and running again, we'll be able to maybe document some of these kinds of activities that are going on, so, so we have a better sense of community. We don't have this isolation that we have right now, nobody knows what the hell is going on, you know, even on the next block, you know? So, uh, and I know that's how it was when I was growing up in Chicago, even maybe what was going on on your block with two blocks, oh, you didn't know what the hell was going on, you know? So, um, I, I, you know, I favor, I'm just saying that I, I favor this. We, we need to probably discuss it more, tweak it, get a committee together, as we did with the Human Services Special Events Committee, you know, the committee got together and said, "Well, you know, maybe we ought to be doing these other things also." And maybe, once that committee is formed, they can come back to the board then and make some recommendations as to how they feel they can, uh, function more effectively. And my three minutes is up.
Thank you. Appreciate that so much, just there. Yes.
Thank you for acknowledging this, uh, first off, on what I saw in twenty seventeen, and what I'm saying in twenty eighteen, I'd like to give convincing commendation to the board, or at least try to pull all of it together. Uh, this was a calm meeting, and we all experienced something that had been very calm. So, I want to at least stress a thank you for twenty eighteen, we don't know how many years it's gonna rain, but right now, I think you're really working hard at it. So, I'd like to, I don't know if anyone else agrees with me?
I agree.
Thank you.
I'll say that's it, and that's it.
Thank you.
And I think it's your birthday?
Yes, it is.
Happy birthday.
Thank you.
Okay, um, now, my question, in regards to the Community Action and Engagement Committee, will this replace, or work in conjunction with, like, penal passing association as far as homeowners? Um, Pinewood, I don't recall Pinewood's having, uh, homeowners association. I know legal farm subdivision, A F Association, will this committee work in conjunction with the associations that are already in place?
No.
Well, sure, they'll just take the information for you, they don't, they won't replace that, no, they can't. They can't do that, associations will still exist, no, no, no.
Oh, I ask you, will this committee work in conjunction with them?
No.
No? Can I, you know?
No, there, I don't understand, um.
Okay, Russell Oaks has the, uh, Chohaw, you know, home of the Russell Oaks Homeowners Association. Will this committee perhaps attend one of their meetings to work in conjunction?
Oh, have to represent it there in case they want something, they need something from their communities, that's not a problem. That's, uh, they won't take anything over here. Let's say, um, um, Russell Oaks or Governor's House, I mean, we used to have one years ago when I was with Freaking Woods, and we had an association as well, but we had nobody to talk to about our concerns once that was done and bring it. To say, um, we had bad plumbing and piping and all that, they used to just bring it to code enforcement or whatever, but if we have a whole body and we have topics that we'll be holding in the town hall meeting, it's not a problem. And they would kind of work with them. We'll be taking concerns, and we can give it to them, they don't necessarily have to attend their meetings, but we can just give it to them and say, "These are things we want, issues that we need to address." That's it, that's all.
And my last question, having attended the town hall meeting, I think it was uniform?
Yes, it was.
Uh, I commend that. My question is, just like the shirts that everybody had on, just like the food that was displayed, is there going to be funding available for this committee?
No. No, that was something that they totally volunteered out of pocket.
Okay.
That was a volunteer thing, I had volunteered my funds to do it so it would be comfortable. We want to make it very soft and, and workable and comfortable. It's no funding, no budget for them whatsoever.
Okay.
Everything is volunteer, yes, Mr.?
I want to get some information, so when I come to talk to people off, but.
Yes.
Citizens Committee.
That's different, no. Yes.
But thank you, and I appreciate everyone trying to work together.
Thank you, we appreciate you. Really appreciate you, yes, Miss Trust?
Uh, I just want to shed some light on the Community Block Club. The Community Block Club is made up of the whole entire community, but it's within subdivision within the, uh, University Park. There's representatives from each subdivision that's on the board, that is on the board. And I might add that there is a difference between a legal block club and a block club. I mean, to make it legal, our block club is legal, the state of Illinois requires you, uh, to be legal. Under the Secretary of State, they require you to be legal.
We have a five-oh-one C.
Um, just a.
But we're going for a five-oh-one C, but what we're trying to do is, there are representatives on that board in every subdivision. Now, there, uh, the, uh, some people don't know that the village is made up of certain subdivisions, like Wood Hill is the oldest subdivision here.
That's what needs to be called.
Okay, I understand that. Uh, she lives in Wood Hill.
And I'd be happy to be your eyes.
Okay. I lived in, in the legal farm homes, but the reg, uh, I'm in a block club, there's a difference between a block club and a block, a group, or a party.
Okay. Uh, excuse me, you can.
So, uh, yeah, uh, well, what I'm trying to say is, uh, it, it encompasses every, uh, subdivision within.
It is a community.
It's a community of block clubs, and during the summer, we're encouraging each block, individual block to have a block party that is just in the same subdivision.
But that's the same thing we're doing, so if you'd like to join in with the village.
If you would like to join into the community legal block club, this is a civic organization, and you're.
Okay, you're put, you're more of a pack, you seem like you're more of a pack.
Just a little, a little.
Okay. Okay, but you're bringing in past people, that's really, um, I've been there, slanders and the, um, thing with Dave Sammy just accused, we don't need that kind of stuff going on in our village to tear it down. And our people are, okay, I'm not gonna have a problem with that, we can talk offsite and down, we'll talk offsite. But our village will be holding block clubs, and they're doing that, and that thing, uh, trustee said is good. They can do, they can, okay, but this is community-driven here, so if you want to have your party, we're not gonna stop you from doing that. Mr., excuse me, Miss Trust, we're not gonna, we, you can have your little party, I'm not gonna stop that. Just like anybody else to have first, you were, um, with people, now you're block club. So, that's fine, whatever title you want to use, that's fine.
No.
If that's, I mean, it's the same people.
That would be dissolved.
Okay, but this don't, okay, you change your name, alright, fine.
No, we'll change it.
Whatever, you can have that, that's okay, but right now, that's not on the agenda, we will discuss that offsite. But we are trying to do this as on the agenda right now, if you don't mind.
We just don't want to be, uh.
No, but we don't want people to come and talk about what the board is not doing, the village is this and that, it's so negative, we don't need that either. We're trying positive, we're trying to be positive in the village. So, people have a chance to attend whenever they want to, we're not gonna stop that, we're not trying to, we're just trying to have something that's a village provided, that the village provides for the people. Now, they have, you have a right to have it, just like CCC has theirs, somebody else has theirs, they can do that. The tea party, everybody has their own, that's fine, we're not stopping that, we're just starting up what we're just. Okay, excuse me, that's what we are, that's what we're just trying to do, okay, trustee?
Madam Mayor, maybe there was some, well, I understand, thank you, Miss Trust. Thank you, Miss Trust, for explaining, uh, your block club. I'm not taking away from that, the only thing I was trying to say is that when us as police officers are selected by Chief of Police to go out into the community, those officers go out into the community to help establish block clubs, Neighborhood Watch, and so on and so on, that was the indication that I gave to Manager Payton, and he understood. That's why I asked him, which is much easier to do it when you're on a grid, a city that has more of a grid, such as the city of Harvey, where block by block, and actually, to piggyback on what trustee, uh, Payton said, is a mirror of the CAPS program that Chicago used, and, and Harvey, it was our CAPS program, which we receive a grant for. So, the only thing I was asking, and when I mentioned it, was that we will be able to have an officer, whether you are part, or not, even if it's, uh, for this, for the mayor's committee, that officer will participate. Even if your block club asks that officer to be there, he will be that extension of the village, because actually, this is something the mayor has been trying to do since twenty eleven, and I'm glad that we're finally at that point. So, that officer will finally would be at your hands, if you, you request for him to come to that meeting, he comes there. Also, his mission, his number one mission, our number one mission was not only to make sure that we attend to the needs of your organization or your group, but any other, whether it's the tenant association, Russell Oaks, he will, look, he will have a lot of work to do. Uh, we had two, that's how much we did in Harvey. So, I just want to make sure, because I campaigned on it, not only I campaigned on it, but Chief Payton, he comes from that region, he understands it, uh, and the mayor and I, this is something that we spoke about six years ago. Is it six years? Time waits for no man, that's seven years now. Uh, but it was something that we had spoke about, and as far as trustee Brooks's position, I want to make sure that at middle, we do have an officer that, number one, that we finally will be able to have at your, your function, if there's a Neighborhood Watch that wants to, you and I stay right there, if a Neighborhood Watch wants to form on Farmview, we want to make sure that that officer is there, but make sure he's an extension of the, of, uh, this, of the other village, pretty much, because he's gonna be taking on a lot of work if we, if we bring everything in as a CAPS program like the mayor has been speaking about since twenty eleven.
And, and just for, just for clarification, the police department has been doing that, but what we've been doing through the manpower shortage, it'd be either myself or Commander Wilson that would go to these various organizational meetings to represent the police department, um, in regards to various issues that may go on. Um, I've been to various association meetings, I've been to very, various places, even various community block club meetings as well. I mean, the thing is, we, uh, we go where we're requested to provide clarification and information as best as possible to try to represent the police department. Um, I understand what trustee Brooks is stating, and we are going to try to kind of expand that and maybe delegate that to an officer, or maybe even a sergeant or supervisor, but we have been doing that since I've been here, and I think we've been very successful at it.
And, you know, years ago, unfortunately, we used to have with the community, um, Dolores Buckley was the community service person, and that was based on a grant, you remember that many years ago? And we lost, well, that grant was never available again, and I really wish that we, you know, because it was. So, we're hoping that somehow, some way, that we can work on that, I, well, I said, I'll be in Washington end of this month, and I will be talking to Noble, and seeing if there are any grant monies available, so we can bring that position back maybe, and see if there's a grant money for that, so that way, they can service the community, because that was a great position for her, and going out, if there are domestic issues, she used to deal with it all, so that's what we want to do. Okay, we're gonna move on, um, that's something we would like to discuss, and change, and make modifications on that. Discussions five eight four, discussions on rental property of village-owned property. I'm glad to see that this is back, um, for a discussion. I, um, brought this up a long time ago, and it was voted down, and I was accused then of saying I'm trying to, um, eliminate Section Eight people, and it wasn't that, I was just saying, like, some villages, they have a limit of what we're gonna do. So, what we're going to talk about? Wait a minute, wait a minute. Community action, discussion rental policies, I'm sorry, rental policies for village-owned property, yes. Um, I'm gonna start that, would you like to open that up to me? Do you want to have a discussion on it?
Uh, Madam Mayor, I, I, I have to recognize on this as well, I'm not sure exactly what the rental policy is on this, since there was nothing attached to this, I will go ahead and state my position in regards to allowing community groups such as the Community Block Club and the meeting of the minds that were just previously discussed in regards to the rental village properties. I want to go ahead and support and say emphatically, Miss Trust and the Community Block Club is not a political organization at all, in, in that they go out and support candidates or any, really, any particular kind of policy. The few meetings I have been to of theirs, they just come and pass out information, they have, I think they were gonna have a, a, a party once, I might have missed that one, but it's more of an informational group, from what I could tell from a few that I have been to, it is not political in that sense. Now, the meeting of the minds, that would be considered a little more political, but, and they're getting together to discuss issues. However, from what, no, no, the meeting of the minds is, that's a different thing, because you have your meeting at one time, and then the meeting of the minds come and they meet someplace else. But, you know.
Yeah, pretty soon. Yeah, so, for people.
Order, please, it's not a discussion. Excuse me, can you, oh, the policeman, can you wait a little, finish on?
You know what, I, I'll leave this conversation, because you know what, because, uh, this is a conversation important, because, uh, I think this is a legislative issue that needs to be addressed. Uh, as the village manager, um, when a re, when a trustee requests the use of a human for rental, I do not, uh, restrict the trustee to the use of village-owned property for.
um, I do not uh, restrict the trustee for the use of village-owned property for anything. Prior to me being village manager, there was a practice that if a trustee requested any town center or any other village-owned property, that it was allowed to be used at free of charge. Uh, over the last month and a half to two months, there have been various trustees that came to me that uh, have issues in regards to various means that are held in this building. Um, it was brought to me, um, I stated, uh, as the village manager, if there's any, needs to be any changes or any set policies that need to be established to restrict the use of any village-owned property for any organization, function, or trustee for using it, there needs to be legislation passed uh, in order for me to follow, uh, guidance. It's very important, very noteworthy to state, that it's the very same individuals requesting the rental of, of this property, um, I have seven bosses, okay? Uh, I will not get in, in the middle of a um, battle uh, with trustees based on various opinions, various thought processes uh, in regards to the rental issue. Uh, the mayor felt that it should be addressed, because this is something that needs to be done in a uniform manner. There's no current, there are currently no written policies in place in regards to the use of rental property, the, the specification of what it could be used for, how it could be used, who could be used by, uh, the fee structure, the fee structure is established on a written document, there's no policy that's attached to it. Um, and again, I historically have pulled rental histories prior to my time as village manager over the last two to three years, and every time a trustee has requested a rental, it's been free of charge. For me to arbitrarily change that, to, for me to arbitrarily change that, I feel um, it needs to be legislative action. Now, what I'm looking at is paperwork that's filled out, if I see a document, and what I'm stating on, 'cause there may be some disagreements in the audience, what I'm looking at is documentation where I see a trustee's signature on it requesting the use of a building. On the document, it says for a community function. When the trustee comes to fill out the documentation, we don't question the function, they put a community function, they give a time limit, as long as there's no current rental being used on the property, we allow the use. Now, if a trustee requests the use of a property and there's a conflicting schedule of a paid person using a property, that trustee does not supersede the paid rental that's in, in the property. Again, there's no written policy on this at all whatsoever, there's nothing documented, period, okay? So, it, I think it is good, healthy discussion for the board to discuss this, uh, because again, I'm not gonna be placed in the middle of disagreements based on the definition of organization, the, the usage of it, uh, making subjective uh, uh, um, um, thought processes in regards to the type of organizations that are using the uh, town center or Pine Lake. This is all rental, all village property, all property, okay? So, the board does need to establish something. What they establish is what they, is their choice, based on what they're establishing in the past is what I would follow, and I would direct my employees to follow.